Thank you everyone for coming. First, we have our invocation Pastor Jonathan Smith with Freedom Baptist. Pastor Smith, come on up and after he does his prayer, we'll do the pledge of allegiance. Please stand. Thank you, sir.
Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for this time that we've been able to gather together to discuss the future of Wayne County and Goldsboro City. So, Lord, we pray that you would bless the city council. I pray that you would give them wisdom. I pray that all things that are said, all decisions that are made would be according to your honor and glory, Lord. Thank you for even some of the servants of this city that we're going to honor tonight for their 20-plus years of service. So, Lord, just thank you for them. Thank you for all who have come out tonight in order to share their love of this city. And so, Lord, we just pray your grace on us in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May I, first, we'll have local?
Here.
Yep.
Here.
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 President.
Here.
We're all here. Next, we have the approval amendment for the work session, rego media of March 5th, 2018, for adoption.
So, move to adopt.
Ms. Councilmember Williams made the motion. Councilmember?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? All favor raise right hand. Opposed, same. Minister passed. Next, we have presentations. But before we start the presentations, I have my own un-agended presentation that I'm going to do for just a minute, so y'all just bear with me for a minute. Chaco, would you stand up, please? Smile. Turn around now. It's a smile, Chaco. Turn around and smile. Alright, y'all. So, today, Chaco is our community relations specialist and just a very, very dedicated city employee, but most of all, today is Chaco's birthday, and she doesn't think I know that. But I do know that, so we're going to sing "Happy Birthday, Chaco." Now, the problem is, I don't know, I can't lead this, so I need somebody that knows how to sing. Like, yeah, I see y'all out there. You can sing. Start us off. Let's go. DJ can sing. DJ, I know you can sing. Let's go.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Jesus Cole. Happy birthday to you.
Amen. Amen. Wow. Alright, well, I appreciate y'all indulging me for that. Now, next, we're going to make the presentations, and our first one is a resolution of special appreciation for services rendered by Dale Foster as an employee of the city of Goldsboro more than 26 years. Dale is in our police department. He's here, and before he comes up, I'm going to read the resolution. Well, I gotta put my glasses on to do that. Whereas Dale Foster retires on May 1, 2018, as a police sergeant with the Goldsboro Police Department of the city of Goldsboro with more than 26 years of service. Whereas Dale began his career on September 25, 1991, as a police officer with the Goldsboro Police Department. On January 5, 2000, Dale was promoted to investigator with the Goldsboro Police Department. On June 17, 2009, Dale was promoted to police sergeant with the Goldsboro Police Department, where he has served to his retirement. Dale has proven himself to be a dedicated and efficient public servant who gained the admiration and respect of his fellow workers and the citizens of the city of Goldsboro. The mayor and the city council of the city of Goldsboro desire us on behalf of themselves, city employees, and the citizens of the city of Goldsboro, expressing to Dale their deep appreciation and gratitude for the service rendered by him to the city over the years. Therefore, be resolved by the mayor and the city council of the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina, that number one, we express our deep appreciation and gratitude to Dale Foster for the dedicated service rendered during his tenure with the city of Goldsboro. Number two, we offer Dale our best wishes for success, happiness, prosperity, and good health in his future endeavors. This resolution shall be incorporated at official events of the city of Goldsboro, and shall be in full force and effect from and after this, the 16th day of April, 2018. Offer this for adoption. Any discussion? All favor raise right hand. Opposed, same. Alright, so the resolution is passed. That makes it official. Come on up, Dale, and let's do, present this to you. Wow.
And I'm sure you have some comments you want to make about your 26-year history.
It's been wonderful.
Well, I think he's...
Is it an honor?
Yeah, there he is.
I know, but he said he was going to say something nice, but...
He's been driving me through the league for years.
It's organized, it's organized. That's nice enough for me, so, yeah.
Chief, you want to get in the picture?
I guess.
Oh, there he is.
Let's let Chief West say some comments first, Dale.
Dale, I appreciate your service for the city and the department. You have to be there longer than I have, and I have learned a lot from you. I'm supervisor now, chief, but a lot of things, I guess, a lot of the trouble is Dale gives a lot of his time, his money away from the department to help not only the department but kids of the community, so he did a lot of work behind the scenes that isn't often ranked. I appreciate your service, and I appreciate your friendship, and you're going to be true to miss. If there's anything that we can do for you moving forward, you've earned it, enjoy it. Congratulations.
Thank you. Dale, that's how the reputation of caring about our youth, and that's something this day and time we really need, so hopefully that'll inspire some of our younger officers coming up to follow your footsteps and do that. And you're welcome to say anything, or you're welcome to sit down.
It's just been a pleasure. I've enjoyed working for the city of Goldsboro. I enjoy working with all the police officers I've worked with. It's been a wonderful career, and I look forward to what's next. Thank you.
Alright, we have one more. I left my glasses down there, so this is going to be even harder. Alright. Teresa Cox retires on May 1, 2018, as a police captain with the Goldsboro Police Department of the city of Goldsboro with more than 25 years of service. Teresa began her career on April 26, 1993, as a police officer with the Goldsboro Police Department. On April 4, 2001, Teresa was promoted to police corporal in the crime prevention unit with the Goldsboro Police Department. On February 27, 2008, Teresa was promoted to police sergeant in the crime prevention unit, the Goldsboro Police Department. On September 19, 2012, Teresa was promoted to police captain with the police department, where she has served to her retirement. Whereas Teresa has proven herself to be a dedicated and efficient public servant who gained the admiration and respect of her fellow workers and the citizens of the city of Goldsboro, the mayor and city council of the city of Goldsboro desire us on behalf of themselves, city employees, and the citizens of the city of Goldsboro, of expressing to Teresa our deep appreciation, our gratitude for the service rendered by her to the city over these years. Therefore, be resolved by the mayor and the city council of the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina, that number one, we express our deep appreciation and gratitude to Teresa for the dedicated service rendered during her tenure with the city of Goldsboro. Two, we offer Teresa our very best wishes for success, happiness, prosperity, and good health in her future endeavors. And three, this resolution shall be incorporated at official events of the city of Goldsboro, and she'll be in full force and effect from and after this, the 16th day of April, 2018. Offer this resolution for adoption. So, move. Second. Any discussion? All favor raise your hand. Resolution passes. So, Teresa, if you'll come up, you know the deal now, and we'll do this again.
I don't know what her shift's going to do without her. She does a good job.
Did Chief West, Rodney, say nice things about you? Come on, Chief.
Oh, look at you.
Come on, get your top on, get your picture. Are you cheering her?
Yes.
Are you pretty proud of her?
Yeah.
Was she proud of you? Right? Most of you, right? You got it. If you can't do this, give it 25 more years, and I ain't know. Alright. Alright, Chief West, what comments you want to say?
Thank you. You're going to be missed. I know by your friendship, you know, we didn't work a lot early on in your career. We didn't work a lot. We kind of separated over the block, but you've done a fabulous job with the department, with your shift and the captain. And also, the tragedy that you experienced in your life, and you've turned that into some of the positive to coordinate with our G-PAC, to give your message out to the community of what you've experienced, to try to help the youth make better decisions and help them lead, and I absolutely respect that, and you've definitely earned my admiration, and I appreciate your service. Dale, don't be offended, I didn't hug you.
Well, this has come around real quick, and I know Chief West was probably trying to be a little nice, but we did work a little bit on overlap, and we have a lot of clubs downtown, and we have to run to one place or run to the other, and me trying to run behind him was kind of...
It was difficult.
Yeah. I had to play everything, like five steps to his one, but I enjoyed all the news and service working with the chief and the police department and working with the citizens, and I am going to miss everybody. I made a promise to my grandson a few years ago that when he turned 13, I was going to retire, so, you know, I'm living up to that promise to him. But I just wanted to say thank you to everyone. I'm not gone, I'm just moving on to something else, so, thank you.
Well, I did want to say, I know you've been a huge asset to our police department. I know you've been a really huge asset to our G-PAC program, and you can certainly come back as a consultant, and we will let you come back anytime you want to.
Appreciate it.
They came back, but I just didn't afford it, and you're part of a big deal to that, so we do appreciate it. I want my honor too.
We've been there 23 years come June, and I couldn't have done it without him, so thank you for this.
You get to the middle of the discussion. Now, come on, grandkids. Come on, you want to speak? No, you just going to take a picture. Come on. I want one of them here for me. Smile. You have to tell me to smile. There's just too many cameras, but... Hey, y'all, stay right here, just so y'all get one of them by themselves, okay? You want to see one with him in here? Alright. You get up here with him. Let me have the camera. Does it work? Alright. Yeah, you talk about smiling, you better just smile, so, let's see. Smile. Smile. Alright, let's get one of this one. I'm going to take one. Alright.
Get your glasses.
I got them. Okay, so next, we have the Gold Star Award Program from Ms. Burdette.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The purpose of the Golden Star Award is to recognize employees in a timely manner for their contributions to the organization. Employees nominated for the Star Award must exceed expectations in customer service, professionalism, problem-solving, quality improvement, teamwork, and community partnership. At this time, I would like the nominees for the March 2018 Star Award to please come forward.
Well, I was worried for a minute.
To mayor, city council, citizens of Goldsboro, on that occasion, my pleasure to introduce to the employee for the solid eight division, Mr. Carlos Wood, Mr. William Cobb. On February 19, there was a lady in distress on Plain Street. Carlos was with the refugee department division, and William was with the relief of land division. I saw in the street, and they helped the lady out of the street, but once they got to the side of the street, they found out the lady was a little bit old, and didn't know anything about her cell phone, so they gave her their cell phone so she could call to get some help. And I think this was way beyond the cause of duty. It took that time to have her make sure she got her phone at that. I'm Mr. William Cobb and Mr. Carlos Wood.
Hey, 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 hey. What is it? Give me that stuff. You bigger than you are. Put it in the center. Right there. Here, you take it. I'm not with Carlos Wood. Yeah, don't chuck it in the sea. Smile. Smile. Oh, you're smiling. Thanks, brother. I'm standing right here. All of them are recommended.
This award goes to Jay Thiggin. On January 28, Jay was making routine lift station checks. During one of his lift station checks, he come across two individuals that were loading water into a tank off of one of the city highways. Looking suspicious, the folks that were loading up that tank were not using a meter from the city, and it was not, had, did not have a RPZ or evacuator or venter on it, and they were kind of filling it from underneath instead of looking, filling it from the top. So, one, they were actually stealing water from the city. Two, they also had the potential of contaminating the water to the city of Goldsboro. So, I commend Jay for doing this because he's one of the eyes and ears out there doing their routine check in the city of Goldsboro. There's 26 lift stations throughout the city of Goldsboro, so they're out there all the time, so I want to give him a hand for showing the citizens that there is eyes and ears out there for you folks.
Good luck. We might add here. Alright, so next, we got Relay for Life proclamation. Is anybody here for Relay for Life? Look there. You just sit back down, and when I get done reading, then you can come up. I don't want you to have to stand that long. I'm a slow reader. Relay for Life proclamation. The Relay for Life is the American Cancer Society's signature activity offering our community a chance to participate in the fight against cancer. Whereas cancer is one of the leading causes of death in the state of North Carolina, an estimated 55,130 new cases will be diagnosed in 2018. Whereas every citizen is at risk of developing cancer, and the Relay for Life is a community gathering that helps raise awareness and funds for the American Cancer Society to continue to do research and assist with patient services, education, and obviously in the admission to eliminate cancer as a helperist. Therefore, I Chuck Allen, Mayor of the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina, hereby proclaim the month of May as Relay for Life Month. And the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina, urge all citizens to show their support for the American Cancer Society Annual Relay for Life to be held May 18, 2018, by wearing their Relay for Life t-shirts to work on Friday, May 4, participating in the Survivor Sunday on May 6, and by displaying their purple ribbons in support of Show Your Purple Week, the entire week of the Relay event. Alright, now, please come. I'm going to present this to you.
You can move on to the sun. Huh? I'm sorry. 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 I'm sorry.[1306.81] Alright, well, let me read it, DJ, and then you can come on up. National Day of Prayer proclamation. Whereas civic prayers and national days of prayer have a long and venerable history in our constitutional republic dating back to the first Continental Congress in 1775. The Declaration of Independence, our first statement as Americans of national purpose and identified May with the laws of nature and nature's God, the foundation of our United States of America, has asserted that people have inalienable rights that are God-given and created in 1952 by joint resolution of the United States Congress and signed into law by President Harry S Truman. The mission and purpose is to encourage prayer for our country and personal dependence. Whereas in 1998, I mean, I'm sorry, 1988, legislating stateside the first Thursday in May of each year is National Day of Prayer was passed unanimously by both houses of Congress and signed by President Ronald Reagan. The Supreme Court has affirmed the right of state legislators to open their sessions with prayer, and the Supreme Court and the United States Congress themselves begin each day with prayer. This year, Wayne County United Prayer is hosting its annual local National Day of Prayer event. Whereas this National Day of Prayer is an opportunity for Americans of all faiths to join in the United Prayer to acknowledge our dependence on God, to give thanks for blessings received, to request healing for wounds endured, and to ask God to guide our leaders and bring wholeness to the United States and her citizens. Therefore, I Chuck Allen, Mayor of the City of Goldsboro, I do hereby proclaim Thursday, May 3rd, 2018, as the National Day of Prayer. In observance of the National Day of Prayer in the City of Goldsboro, North Carolina, and commend observance to all our citizens. Alright, Chris DJ, come on. So where's the event gonna be?
At the YMCA.
Okay. And we have a time?
Seven o'clock.
YMCA is seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock at nine.
I got that. Are you smiling? Was he, were you smiling?
I was.
That's good enough, because you're out there and smiling.
I need you to smile.
Is that better?
That's better.
You happy?
Yeah, I am.
I'm sure y'all want us to do this book. So let me give you, and then y'all, y'all have the floor and y'all speak and tell everybody what you want to know, okay?
Alright, Mayor, City Manager, City Council members, families of Goldsboro. It's a great evening to be before you today. We're excited to talk about the National Day of Prayer, which is May the 3rd, seven o'clock at the YMCA. There are seven areas in which we normally pray, but here in Goldsboro, we pray in eight areas. The areas are identified on your little bookmark that we gave out to you. We'll be praying in areas of government, military, media arts, business, education, church, family, and the part that we add in youth. And this year, we'll have an addition where our youth will be, they will have a certain amount of time in which they'll go up and then they will honor us with a song at the end. So I know that we have a lot of things going on in Goldsboro on May the 3rd, but I challenge you to come to the YMCA, seven o'clock on May the 3rd. We'd love to have your presence there as we pray for these eight areas here in our city. And to our citizens and our family here in Goldsboro, North Carolina, what an honor it is to be on this committee with myself and Ms. Nancy Summern representing the National Day of Prayer, and look forward to seeing you that night. Thank you very much.
Thank y'all for your efforts on this, and I'm sure you'll have a great attendance.
That's gonna be great.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know y'all are gonna be sad, but that's the last presentation we have. So now we're gonna move to public hearings, and our first one is Z-518, the northeast corner of Tommy's Road and Claremont Drive. Jennifer?
Item G is C-518, Fortina Hernandez. Property is located on the northeast corner of Tommy's Road and Claremont Drive. The applicant's requesting a zoning change from R-20A residential to RM9 residential manufactured home. The surrounding zoning as seen on the map is to the north you have R-16 residential, to the south R-20A and RM9 manufactured home, and to the east and to the west you have R-16 residential. The property is currently vacant, as shown on the map here and indicated in the red boundary area. The proposed use is requesting RM9 residential zone would permit the placement of one manufactured or mobile home on the property. The city's adopted land use plan recommends low-density residential development for the subject property, and the request to RM9 would be consistent with that plan. City water and sewer lines are not available to serve the subject property. An RM9 zoning district would require measuring underpinning pitch roof and horizontal siding, and shall have working windows and no rust, and have the appearance of a site-built home. At this time, there is no recommendation. The planning commission will have a recommendation for council at their meeting on May 7th.
Any?
And here are just some photos of the subject property. Any questions?
It's in the ETJ, isn't it?
Sir?
It's in the ETJ?
Yes, sir.
Alright, you good? This is a public hearing. Would anybody like to speak for or against this rezoning? Anybody like to speak for or against? Yes, sir. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, gentlemen, ladies.
I think that's the zoning, it's for the zoning. You gonna speak on this, sir?
The zoning, no.
No, you're gonna, yeah, that's just for this, yes, sir. You'll get a chance to speak.
I have to return, guys.
Okay. Alright, so anybody want to speak for this rezoning? The northeast corner of Tommy's Road and Claremont Drive. Does anybody want to speak? Okay, we'll close this public hearing and move to the next.
Item H is Z-618 SWR Properties. The property is located on the east side of Carolina Commerce Drive between DS75 Pass and Tommy's Road. The applicant initially requested his zoning change from general business and R-16 residential to I-2 general industry, but has now requested withdrawal of the application. Since the request was advertised, posted, and notices mailed out to adjacent owners, in accordance with state law, the public hearing has to be held as scheduled and final action taken by city council. Is recommended by motion after the public hearing to deny the applicant's request without prejudice. Any questions?
No questions. Thank you, Jennifer. This is a public hearing for SWR properties. Would anybody like to speak? Seeing no one, we will close this public hearing, and we will excuse our hard-working planning commission, and thank y'all for coming tonight. And Bishop Slater, glad to have you here. Uh, we need a motion to deny?
Yes, sir.
Without prejudice?
I make a motion to deny, to deny without prejudice. Z-618.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Alright, thank y'all. Thank y'all for coming tonight. Okay, so next, what on our agenda is our public comment period. Anybody in the audience may speak up to three minutes on any issue that relates to the city that you'd like to. And Jennifer, sir, you can come first, since you already got a head start.
I think we're too good.
There you go.
I'm Reverend George Barfield III. I'm here today because I felt the impact of one of your council members, and the impact being in the inner cities was mostly my ministry and my educational background and social work dealing with. And I want to thank Mr. Antonio Williams for his effort that has impacted our inner-city communities. When I say inner-city communities, I just don't mean brown Americans. I mean red Americans, yellow Americans, whatever other color Americans. Because poverty and hunger has no bias, and we need to know that. And we want to thank you, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, sir.
For what you have done, your courage to stand up for what is right and what is true. And God wants to reward you. He sent me here today to let you know covenically that he's pleased with your work. If it's undone, then it continues. He would for you, and be not discouraged. Continue to do the work that you're doing. Cry loud and spur not, and bring attention to those who are hurting, those who have been locked out of the economic system, and those who need to be loved and embraced as Goldsboro citizens and as patriotic Americans. And for the rest of the city council, I want to thank you. I don't know if people thank you a lot. I guess we get a lot of criticism. I read about them in newspapers. I want to take time to thank you and your individual endeavors, your assignments to the city government. You've done a great job. I know Scott from Kinston, he's always on, he's always doing something creative, and I want to thank you. And God is pleased with you that what we do and our ambition in life is not individualistic. It is collective. It includes everybody, because in God's eyesight, everybody is somebody. Everybody is somebody. Tell the kids in New York City about a thousand, I am somebody, red and yellow, black and white. We're all precious in God's sight. That means everybody is somebody. But when we're collected in our endeavors and our ambitions, we bring people together. When we're individualistic, we tear people apart. Closing, I might have about 40 seconds. I was driving my vehicle, and this guy just flew right in front of me. Another time I was driving in the business, this guy actually used some profanity at me. Now, I was doing what the law required. And before I reacted, you know what I did? I never curse anybody out, but I sure have cut cross in front of somebody. I said, "George, look at you." And I began to show some empathy for me, and that's what we all need to do. Before you criticize again, think about where you've been and what you've done. I guarantee you, you're changing with the only thing. God bless you. Thank you.
Alright, would anybody else like to speak from the audience? Anybody else like to speak? Nobody? Come up, sir. How are you tonight?
I'm well. How about yourself?
Very happy you are.
Good evening, Mayor, City Manager, and City Council. I just wanted to come and talk to you tonight about something that Operation at Goldsboro is doing in the city. If you look at the paper that this gave you, basically what we're trying to do, just like you guys are sitting up here and then the audience is sitting there, that's how our city is kind of organized with the Goldsboro Parks and Rec, YMCA, WA Foster Center. And so what we're gonna do is come together and we're going to try to consolidate all of the things that are happening in the city for our, for our youth, and come up with a big, big calendar of events so that we can publicize it and get it out there into the community so that the youth know what's going on with the summer, trying to take a forward approach since all of you know that over the past two summers, we've really had a lot of gun violence, had a lot of issues and incidents with our youth in the city. And so we're taking a different approach instead of, I know last year I came to you and suggested that maybe we're gonna do a curfew, and talking with some of you and talking with the Chief of Police, that was an option kind of not on the table at this time. So I come back before you with another option that this already, the things that we already have in place, whatever the YMCA is doing, the WA Foster Center. So tomorrow, we're going to be meeting all collectively, Goldsboro Transportation Authority, Wayne Community College, the library, anybody that's doing something for the kids this summer, we're gonna come together and we're gonna talk about it tomorrow, and come up with a plan so that we can publicize it and get it out there. So for instance, the YMCA, not just what they're doing, they're gonna publicize what we're all doing, so that everybody has an option as to what they want to do. We're gonna talk with the Goldsboro Transportation Authority and see with all these things going on, what they can do to help transport the kids, be it at a reduced rate, be it at a free rate, or whatever it takes. And one of the things that, as you can see on your second page there, the effective numbers in areas with all of the schools that are listed there, it totals about 5,700 kids from Goldsboro, Dillon Middle, Eastern Wayne Elementary, Middle High, North Drive, Carver Heights, Dillon Academy, Wayne Academy, School of Engineering, and all of those schools there with all of those students, we're talking about 5,700 kids that are gonna be out of school, starting May 25th for Goldsboro High School, and then June 8th for the rest of the county schools. So what we're trying to do is get ahead of the train before they actually get out of school and have a plan in place. And what we're asking you guys to do is that once we come back with the plan, if we could get some assistance, either publicizing and putting this document together, God bless you, putting this document together, and then actually publicizing it and just getting the word out there, if we can get, you know, kind of your stamp of approval and kind of push it out there. So our goal is to work on decreasing the number of deaths and gun violence that we had in the city over the past two years, so we're trying to get ahead of that.
Where is your meeting at, Mark?
It's gonna be Salvation Army at six o'clock.
At six o'clock?
Yes, sir.
Salvation says April 17th, Salvation Army, six o'clock.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Would anybody else like to speak? You're coming to speak or leaving?
I'll either leave it.
Y'all have a good night. Thank you. Alright, well, we will close the public comments time, and we will move to consent agenda.
Mayor, Council, your consent agenda consists of a revised item I through S. So revised item I through S, as you had discussed earlier.
Alright, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Sure, move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Mayor Allen?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Ross?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Fox?
Yes.
Councilmember Drayke?
Yes.
Alright, consent agenda passes. Next, we have items requiring individual action. Item Z-318 Berkeley Realty Holdings. I guess we got a request today to defer this for two weeks, so I don't see any point in bringing this up or discussing this, right?
We all agree that's cool.
Alright, so we'll just skip this, and we'll move to City Manager's report.
Mayor, Council, a couple of things I'd like to share. First, I do want to just say thank you to Jay and Amy Bauer for the U.S. Colored Troop Living Weekend. I do think they had a number of events. I attended several of those. It appeared to be a great success, and again, took a lot of time and effort on many people's part, but Jay and Amy certainly led the charge with that. I also want to mention, we installed the F-4 at the Multi-Sports Complex or the Bryan Multi-Sports Complex this afternoon. We've been doing that the last week. Our contractor's been there. It really has been a partnership between the contractor, city crews, and Seymour Johnson Air Force Base personnel. But I think you'll be very pleased when you see that. We have folks that worked on the aircraft, sort of oversee. They had retired and stood on site almost the entire time they were working through that aircraft installation. And even as windy as it was today, they were able to successfully get it up on the pole there, so it'll be ready for our dedication on next Monday at 10 o'clock. So again, I would invite you and others to that. And then finally, I would like to mention that our Fire Chief, Chief Joseph Dixon, will be in town most of this week at a lot of meetings. I would hope to have an opportunity to meet with you, meet with a lot of churches, meet with employees, and other community members. So again, I would do want to welcome him and hope you'll make an opportunity to visit with him and just get a chance to get to know him a little bit and welcome him to Goldsboro. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, we'll go to Councilmember Comments. Mayor Pratim?
Yes, Mayor. It's past Saturday, the Sunrise Cohandas Club hosted the Greater Goldsboro Race to benefit children's activities in Wayne County. And this is the 40th anniversary of this race. We had a great turnout. I didn't run, but I was there at the beginning of the ceremony. And I want to thank all the volunteers who participated in traffic control, sponsors who provided refreshments, and of course, those people who came out to participate in the run. It was a great day, great event.
So, thank you, sir. Mr. Drayke?
You know, I too want to thank the Bowers for bringing the colored troop recognition to Goldsboro. You know, it's good to learn local history and especially history that you were not aware of at all. And I was able to attend one event and actually saw a grandson of a dear friend of mine, Shirley Rogers, was the drummer boy in the, in the reenactment part of it. And also, you gotta go by our new sports facility, and that F-4 looks fantastic sitting where it's sitting, you know? It's something that the base is proud of, and it's something that we should be proud of. And that's it.
No comment.
Mr. Stevens?
I just wanted to say thank you to the Bauer family for bringing, like I said, once again, the 135th colored troop in historical preservation to the city of Goldsboro and letting all citizens of Wayne County and Goldsboro know about our heritage and our role in the Union Army, you know, with regards to the Civil War, and letting us, you know, African-Americans know about our heritage. I also wanted to say thank you to Mr. Henry Rice coming forth to talk about what it is to be an American and what it is truly to have that privilege, because it's not just about African-American experience, or the Caucasian-American experience, or Asian-American experience, or Hispanic. It's about all of us being together and being one, and truly understanding that this country belongs to all of us, and to really pledge ourselves to this greater, as a greater experience in being, all of us being one and trying to work together. So I just say thank you to him and thank you to all the ones that were a part of this great and wonderful weekend that was, we, almost two weeks ago, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Rowan?
I too would like to congratulate the Bowers for a great weekend, but also want to congratulate the Air Force. They did, and the people who worked on that airplane, they painted that airplane, they got it ready, they made it so it could be mounted on a pedestal. That's an awful lot of work. That thing weighs 23,000 pounds, and they also got it up on that pedestal this afternoon. So my congratulations, they did a great job on that airplane, and that's a whole lot of airplane to paint. That's all I have, sir.
Drayke?
I want to thank Reverend George Barfield. I really appreciate that. I didn't expect anybody to come in here and say that, and I appreciate that. You keep doing what you're doing. And also, I want to acknowledge Mr. Sherman. He's a contractor that has built many houses here in Goldsboro over the years. He's actually, he was actually a county commissioner, too. And I just want to acknowledge him for his greatness and what he's contributed to Goldsboro. A lot of these houses wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for him. And also, I got a chance to talk to John from Keane Plumbing. Anybody who's looking for work that's a plumber, there are jobs available, but you must pass a drug test. They're looking for helpers, too. So, you know, there are jobs out here, you just have to warn them. Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Following up, I also want to thank Jay and Amy Bauer for their work on the 135th. They spearheaded, but a lot of people fell in to help them. They had a committee, and it's just, it was really, really a lot of effort to bring this thing to Goldsboro, and we really appreciate their efforts, and not to mention the history that we all learned from that. We've heard a lot of mention about the Multi-Sports Complex, but I want to be sure everybody knows that the ribbon cutting is the 23rd at 10 o'clock. All our citizens are invited. We'd love to have a great turnout. This is a major, major event in our community, something that we worked a lot on and something that we believe is gonna bring a lot of tourism, a lot of money into our community, as well as give our kids somewhere to play. So we're really excited about this venue, and certainly on the 23rd at 10 o'clock, anybody who wants to come, we'd love to have you. This coming Saturday, we have Maid on Main Street downtown. It's at 2 o'clock. The DGDC and the Arts Council partnered and got a grant, and they're gonna paint some side, some crosswalks. So if anybody is interested in that, that's this Saturday at 2 o'clock downtown at Walnut and John Street, I think is where it starts. So you're welcome to do that. This past Saturday, the Sheriff's Department, I think is who really sponsored it, but they had a first responders appreciation lunch at the fairgrounds. And so I just want to take a minute to thank all our first responders, whether it's law, fire, EMS, paid volunteer. We have a lot of really, really trained professionals doing a lot of really good work in this city and county, and I just want to thank them. And then I want to end it on telling y'all, I had got the opportunity about two weeks ago to do a tour at Wayne Community College, and I, you know, lived there all my life, but I never realized what a true gem and what an asset Wayne Community College is to our community. They have some unbelievable stuff going on, the job training, training people welding, all kinds of different programs out there, car repair, AC, but then they also have Wayne Early Middle College, which folks can go in and get a two-year degree towards their college, and obviously saves money. So Wayne Community is really quite the hidden asset, and I encourage folks to find more about that. With that, I think, thank you everybody for coming, and we'll stand adjourned.